Okay, good evening, everybody. I'd like to call to order this special council meeting on Monday, November 1st, 2021. The special meeting is was called for the presentation of the audit report so that council could receive the audit report prior to the election tomorrow. And then we also added the cannabis resolutions that which were scheduled for our meeting in October while council wanted a little bit more time to refine a few things. And so we, since we had this meeting already scheduled, we moved moved it from October 28th to this particular meeting. So the clerk can please do a roll call?
Okay, Councilmember Cantor?
Here, I am in Lathrow Village, Michigan, Oakland County.
Councilmember Siddiqui?
Here, Lathrow Village, Oakland County, Michigan.
Councilmember Ferguson?
Still here, Lathrow Village, Michigan, Oakland County.
Councilmember Medley?
Here, Satake, New York, Suffolk County.
Mayor Garrett?
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to excuse Mayor Garrett who contacted us to let us know that she was not going to be available for this meeting.
I will second.
Nope, nope, somebody's gonna make the motion.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you said I would. I would make a motion to excuse Mayor Garrett.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been motioned and seconded. Any discussion? Okay, if not, roll call, please.
Mayor Protim? Cantor?
Yes.
Councilmember Ferguson?
Yes.
Councilmember Siddiqui?
Yes.
Councilmember Ferguson?
Medley.
Medley?
Yes.
Who'd I miss?
Okay, looks like the motion is passed. Mayor Garrett is excused. We can go ahead with the the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next we'll move on to the approval of the agenda. I'll take a motion for the agenda.
Like motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
Been motioned and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Hold on, I'm not ready for this. Okay. Okay, the motion was by?
Salim Siddiqui.
Yeah, by me, Salim.
I seconded.
Okay, all right. Cantor?
Yes.
Ferguson?
Yes.
Siddiqui?
Yes.
Medley?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, thank you. So the the next thing we'll do is 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 open up the meeting to public comments specifically for items that are on the agenda tonight. Speakers will be limited to three minutes. So if you would like to make public comments, please raise your hand through Zoom, and we will acknowledge you.
We do have one. Let me, Howard, you are able to speak.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Howard Lockoff with New Standard. I appreciate the opportunity to address you tonight. I've sent two letters to you, which more fully address my concerns, and I will not repeat the substance of those letters tonight. We've submitted applications in many communities for dispensary. We know we can submit a great and competitive application in the city of Lathrow Village. Our experience is such that lack of objective scoring criteria has led to legal challenges in many communities. While we are not litigious and are not a party or involved in litigation with municipalities, one of our projects has been derailed and another delayed as a result of legal challenges. We suggest that you should be very careful with the adoption of the scoring criteria. I'm available to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lockoff. Any anyone else want to speak? Looks like Lawrence Levy's got his hand up. Could we make him unmute him?
Can you guys hear me?
Yep, can hear you.
Hey, good evening. My name is Lawrence Levy from Levy Tech Professionals. I've been a very happy Lathrow Village property owner for literally over 20 years now. And in understanding the scoring criteria, I thought that it may be wise to suggest that the city adopt a similar criteria. What's the difference if you're a commercial property owner, or if you're a residential property owner? And that was one of the concerns that I had and wanted to bring to council's attention to see if that was something that you would consider.
All right, thank you. Anyone else?
I guess you have one more, Martha Moore. Hold on, where'd it go? Oh, shoot. I was too quick.
All right, you're you're unmuted, Ms. Moore. Go ahead.
Yes, yes, I do have a comment, and I have a statement. I typed it out. So all of the recent talk from the city council about transparency and listening to residents is quite frankly fiction and superficial talking points designed to win votes. Why is there such a rush to get marijuana dispensaries in our tiny city one day before the election? Such action is troubling, to say the least. This city council allowed a known fraudulent petition, including non-residents, supporting marijuana dispensaries to inform its decision to allow it. However, this same city council ignored and completely dismissed the wishes of over 400 residents who specifically and unequivocally expressed disapproval of marijuana dispensaries. While that petition may have been technically deficient to put the issue on the ballot, one thing is certain: the signatures are genuine. These are people who do not want marijuana dispensaries in in the neighborhood. But rather than step back and listen to the voices of these residents, it appears that this city council is instead rushing ahead to approve marijuana dispensaries in a futile attempt to silence voices of those who oppose it. If you say you will listen to every voice in the city, then do that. Provide an opportunity for every voice to be heard. Granted, you've got to make a decision one way or the other. Somebody's going to win. We understand that. We get that. So if more people want it, then don't. Then we understand that. But at least we want an opportunity to have our voices heard. And don't say, as I've heard several times, that we've had many opportunities to make our voices known. You took up this issue during the time of a global pandemic, and there were lots of distractions around this global pandemic. In any event, if you didn't have any opposition then, well, you certainly have it now. And I'm pleading with you not to ignore the wishes of the residents of this city. What is the rush here? There are several cities in Michigan who have opted out of marijuana dispensaries. In fact, Lathrow Village was one of those cities. Why did we even opt in? I heard at this very city council meeting that if money was a motivating factor, then it was grossly misplaced, because we were told we're not going to get a lot of money for marijuana dispensary. So what what is it then? I don't understand what our rush is to bring these businesses into our community. Do we want our city, that's only about a mile and a half in size, to be littered with marijuana dispensaries? I had a chance to listen to the planning commission where we rejected a sign. I mean, certainly, if the citizens can reject a sign, what about marijuana dispensaries? There's also been-
Excuse me, ma'am, your time is up. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. Anyone else?
I do not see any other hands raised, Mayor Protim.
Okay, all right. Well, if there's no other hands, thank you. Thank you for your comments. We'll now move on to the action requests for consideration or approval. And the the first item on the agenda in that regard is the acceptance of the fiscal year 21 audit report. So I assume that they're going to present to us. Is that correct, Cheryl? Oh, you're on mute?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. So I don't know. Is that you, Ashley, or?
Yeah. So hi, I'm Ashley Fraz here with Plant Moran, and Alicia's on the line as well. Cheryl, I don't know. She called in VSL. She was having some technical issues with Zoom. I'm not sure if she needs to be manually unmuted. The phone number is 248-252-5240 is the number she's called in on. All right, Alicia, it looks like you're unmuted. Are you able to hear us?
Oh, I'm, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes. Perfect. Thank you. And I I apologize. I am trying to restart my computer. I don't know what's going on, but happy to join by phone in the meantime. And should I not be able to get get on? Unfortunately, Ashley is there and able to share her screen. But but maybe just if I could share a couple of introductory comments before Ashley dives into the graph. So the first, of course, would be just to, you know, thank the city team, including the council and the mayor, for the opportunity to continue to work with the city to complete another audit. My name is Alicia Watkins, as was mentioned, and I was brought on board last year to colleague and support Pam Hill, who had been the the prior engagement partner and worked with the team. And when we went through the rebid process, we thought it was appropriate to make a change and have me take over in the lead engagement role. And so I'm really honored to be serving in that role with you all. So we did complete our second audit for the city during the pandemic. And so we did that mostly remotely again this year. But we did have some time onsite again with with Pam and the team and, you know, have have mutually agreed that, you know, sort of regardless of what's going on this time next year, we do want to get back onsite. We think that's the best way to work with the team to get the audit done. And we look forward to being able to do that next year, but appreciate the flexibility of Pam and Cheryl and everyone to work with us through this pandemic to get it done remotely in the meantime. Overall, you know, it was a it was a positive experience. Great to be here on schedule as planned with you all this evening. You know, I would say if there was a challenge, probably the most significant challenge was that the turnover that the city experienced with the the finance and treasury team, which left a lot of heavy living for the for the group that was lost with year end and audit. It's a tremendous amount of work, I think, as everyone's aware. And so doing that with being down some key personnel was a little bit challenging. And as you can see in some of the comments in the letter, a lot of that really came down to some of the personnel constraints. So we can we can talk through that a little more in depth. You know, despite that, I'm happy to report that the city, you know, did receive an unmodified opinion on your financial statements. It is the highest assurance that we can provide, and really what you should expect as an organization, to let the users of the financial statements know that they are materially correct and they are complying with all the rules and regulations that they need to. So with that, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Ashley and have her walk us through the financial highlights through the graph presentation.
Thanks, Alicia. Can you all just confirm that you can see the screen share of the slides?
Yep, we can see it.
Great, thank you.
Yep.
All right. So so first off, this is just kind of a highlight like we traditionally do. Instead of covering, you know, the thick document that you received as part of your deliverables, which was the audited financial statements, we like to summarize this and provide, you know, a historical comparison and kind of highlight some of the activity imbalances as of June 30th, 2021. So the first slide here presents the fiscal year revenues for all of the city's funds, except for the water and sewer fund, and then, of course, excludes the fiduciary funds. So this is your general major and local streets and the street improvement bond fund, as well as the capital improvement fund. It to the far right is the 2021 column. You can see the most notable increase is the other category of revenues that are presented here. So that's related to the $4.72 million bond issuance this year and the related $1.1 million debt premium on that bond. So in governmental funds, in accordance with GASB accounting standards, those are reported as inflows or revenues into the into the fund in which they come in. And then they expect the spending of that will be shown on the next slide as expenditures, where, you know, in the long term picture in the governmental wide statements, it is long term debt. But that is the GASB presentation is showing this as an other revenue stream in the year that the debt is issued. Other areas of revenue remain relatively consistent. You can see in the teal that property taxes continue to make up the largest percentage of revenues outside of the current year debt issuance at $3 million for fiscal 2021. The the debt millage that was passed was first levied in July, on July 1st of 2021. So that won't be reflected as property tax revenue until the fiscal 2022 audit, as budgeted by the city. And then just a quick highlight in the orange category, the federal and state total this year does include the COVID federal revenue. There was about $289,000 received by the city largely for the public safety, public health, and the first responder hazard care premium programs that came through as federal monies reimbursements during the year. Moving on to the expenditures for those states for those same funds, wanted to point out kind of the the significant changes here. You can see the majority of the expenditure categories remained relatively consistent. The big swing would be in the gray. So again, that other category and what that includes this year is the capital outlay, which includes spending down of some of that bond money. There was $1.16 million of capital outlay was recorded in fiscal 2021 for some street projects that that mostly was in construction in progress at the end of the year. But, you know, those expenditures were incurred through June 30th, and so they're reflected as such as those other expenditures for the year. The other category that I did want to highlight, and we'll talk about it in a couple of slides when we get to the retiree healthcare OPEB liability. But the governmental services teal at the chart there, that includes the $150,000 additional OPEB contribution that was made during fiscal 2021 for the first time. And like I mentioned, we'll we'll talk highlight kind of the funding of that plan for the first time in a couple of slides. Are there any questions on revenues and expenditures at all?
Um, so just can you go back to the the first slide? I just want to point one thing out for people who are watching. I mean, the thing I find interesting here is, under property taxes, you know, because we are a city that's that's completely built out and have very, very little open land to increase our tax base, and the fact that we're like other cities subjected to headly, you know, which rolls back our millage rate as our property taxes increase, so that we don't get more than the prior year, you'll see that the difference between in property taxes between 2020 and 2021 is only about 2%, which is what we're afforded by headly for the for inflation. So, you know, our our one of our biggest problems as a city is that our our tax revenue stays stagnant. And I think that's a good illustration, seeing those numbers there. So I just wanted to point that out for residents that are watching.
Yeah, thank you so much. And that's a great segue into the next slide. So this is total taxable value. So we do like to make sure that this is included, because this is, you know, a further highlight of what you just mentioned. So this slide presents a taxable value of the city since 2006. And then 2021 is half, you know, in the middle of the of the chart there, and then projected at a two and a half percent increase through 2036 going forward. So like most communities, you can see that taxable values were impacted by the recession from 2009 all the way through 2015. And since haven't yet, through 2021, haven't gained back up to that level, as was just explained, the property tax value increases are limited to the lesser of 5% or inflation, which typically is below the 5%. So, you know, one after that recession, it's it's a challenge for the city to, you know, get that taxable value up, just because it, you know, you're limited on the new developments. And so this is a great slide that I think depicts that as it relates to kind of the ability to, you know, you know, come up with new new funding as it relates to property taxes, which, as I mentioned, is the most significant revenue source for the city.
Yeah. And again, I think it's I think it's interesting to note there that, you know, for us to get back to our 2006 revenue, you know, all things, you know, with with, you know, constant growth, which may or may not be the case between now and the next, you know, 10 years or so, you know, we're looking at the early 2030s before we get back to the tax level, the revenue level that we had in 2006. So again, that's another, you know, handcuff on on our city as far as, you know, having revenue to do the things, all the things that we want to do. So, yeah, I like that slide. I don't like what it's saying. I don't like what it's saying, but I like like it for them for its demonstration capability.
Yep, it's it's the reality. Yep, definitely.
Just add to your point, it's almost like a decline in revenue over 30 years when you think of the value of, you know, time value of money over 30 years and what you sort of purchase, you know, 30 years later with the same revenue amount, right? It's sort of almost like a decline, even though that number is the same 30 years later.
Yeah, yeah.
All right. So aside from property taxes, state shared revenue makes up the second largest revenue stream to the city's general fund. So did want to, you know, provide this depiction here that presents in the orange line, the level of state shared revenue from 2001 held constant, so about $515,000. And then the gold line is the actual revenue sharing payment since 2001, all the way through fiscal 2021. So you can see that since 2016, the actual amounts have been trending upwards, but aren't yet back to those 2001 state shared revenue levels. You'll see the decline in 2020. So that was as a result of the state eliminating the statutory portion of the state shared revenue payment in August of 2020, as a result of the pandemic that was replaced with federal revenue sharing the following year. So moving on to the just looking at the general fund, so the city's main operating fund, where the previous slides looked at, you know, all of the city's governmental funds, this is just the city's general operating fund. And what this graph depicts is the final financial information, where the unassigned and unassigned in assigned fund balance in the orange is essentially the GASB terms for available fund balance at the end of each of those four years presented in comparison to the annual expenditures for each of those years. So you can see on the far right that as of June 30, 2021, the unassigned and assigned fund balance total of 1.46 million was about 35% of the annual expenditures for the year. So it's still a healthy fund balance, you know, within that 30 to 40% range of the past trend. So we do like to just show that slide. And there were assignments made for, you know, different intentions to use some of that available fund balance based on management's intentions. So we just want to make sure that, you know, those numbers is essentially the only available amount as of June 30th in the general fund. There are different restrictions, whether it be legal or grant restrictions, other third party restrictions, the other components of fund balance. So the unassigned and assigned are kind of the residual after those amounts. And this final slide, as I mentioned previously, we'll spend a little bit of time here covering the long term pension and retiree healthcare, which is referred to as OPEB liabilities of the city. So first, looking on the left side of the screen, that pie chart shows the pension liability. So the total pension liability of $8.38 million is approximately 81% funded. So the there is assets set aside with MERS that the city has set aside, contributed into the MERS multi employer plan towards that total pension liability that results in it being 81% funded as of December 31, 2020. That is an increase in the funding level. Last year, it was funded at 76%. So 81%, you know, it's an increase there in in a pretty, you know, healthy funded pension plan, or moving it continuing, moving in the right direction as well. On the right pie chart is the total OPEB liability. So this is the retiree healthcare plan. So in the past, this chart has only shown an entire orange portion, the total liability was the net liability, because the city hadn't set aside any investments or funds for designated specifically for this liability. During fiscal 2021, there was $200,000 contributed into the OPEB plan. And of course, there's investment earnings reflected in that ending $213,000 balance. So this resulted in, you know, an increase from the funding level from the past that was previously 0%. So again, although it looks like a small percent funded, it is moving in the right direction as the city has made, you know, those difficult decisions to as to how to how to fund that liability and set setting up the trust and getting, you know, that funding continuing to designate dollars to contribute into that plan to address that long term liability. Are there any questions on the remaining slides that I covered, or even pension or OPEB as a whole?
I have a question, and it may have been covered before. Just a little bit of insight, because we're setting aside to eliminate this unfunded portion of our liability. What is the the timeline for us to complete that? And Cheryl, this may be a question for you. And then is there an opportunity that someone could want to tap this fund before we have enough money in there built up?
Can't tell if I'm unmuted or not. There is a limited number of employees currently in the plan. So ideally, you would want to fund it before they utilize it. So there's a limited timeframe for funding it. So I would say it's on a relatively short timeframe that you would want to look at fully funding that. So as a as a body, you might want to start taking a look at what are your options relative to funding this liability?
And, you know, we might be able to add that in recent years, the state has put some provisions in place to try to move municipalities towards a greater funding levels for both retiree healthcare and pension plans that are, you know, not well funded. And so they're looking at a time horizon of between 20 and 30 years. I think it's 30 years for OPEB. Ashley, 202, is it 30 years for OPEB? Do you remember?
Yes, I believe so.
And so they're looking for communities to be at like 40%, 30 to 40% within 30 years. So, you know, it's not like they're saying, you know, overnight, you've got to get to 100% here. I mean, they are, you know, and they can't sort of mandate funding. So it's it's a combination of, you know, funding and or reducing the liability to kind of bridge the gap, right? So depending on what communities are going to do. But just to give some perspective on what the state would like to see. I mean, it is, you know, they're giving you quite quite a long timeline, but kind of, you know, getting some funds in there now is fantastic, because, you know, you get those compounding earnings, right? So the fact that you're doing that now is going to serve you better and will reduce future contributions over time as you build up those funds.
So and the other the other question I would ask just for consideration and not to be solved tonight, is this something that that is truly sustainable for us to be able to continue to offer this as a benefit? And so that may be something going forward with And so that may be something going forward with financial, you know, obligations and liability that the next council might want to look at.
This is actually a closed program. There are no additional, any new hires do not go into this program, so.
Everyone that's, everyone that's in is grandfathered in right now.
Okay, then, then we, then that eliminates increasing liability. Thank you.
Right, so I believe there's, I believe there's about 15, 15 people in there, if I remember correctly, something, something close to that.
So the goal is to just fully fund it and then we're set. It's, it's already, it's already have, already have participants and we don't have to worry about anything else.
And right now we are paying as we go.
We're paying as we go, you said?
Pay as we go, so we haven't had to use this money out of this here.
Okay.
But how does this liability increase? Will this liability potentially increase?
It could.
Talking about the OPEB.
Yeah, so it, it could because there's a lot of factors driving that, right? So it estimates, you know, the people that are in the plan already that they're going to live a certain number of years, right? So it's estimating one's mortality, it's contingent on, you know, a lot of other in some assumptions. And so it just, you know, those could go either way. It, it depends on the, the earnings in the plan, you know, to offset, you know, the, the net liability. Some, you know, that's going to be up and down. So there's, there's a lot of factors, the rates, the, the long-term rate of returns, a discount rate that can be used on the actuaries' projection. So there's some pretty significant assumptions that can drive that liability up and down. And they try to smooth it out so that you're not seeing those big spikes. But even if you're doing all the right things, you can sometimes see that, that number go up due to, you know, people are living longer, you know, that alone could, could drive it up.
So mostly market-driven?
Yeah, market and external factors, things that are out of your control, right? You've done what you can, you've closed the plan, you're not letting anyone else in. So if it's increasing, it's based on things that are out of your control.
Right.
So Alicia, let me ask, maybe it's a naive question because the, the one thing that's always bugged me about OPEB is, you know, it, to, to some extent, it's, it's a fixed cost per year because it's mostly, you know, healthcare premiums. And I think it's somewhere around, correct me if I'm wrong Pam, somewhere around $130,000 a year. It's just, it's just great. So, so is, is the idea here that, you know, the, the, the state wanting it funded, you know, that they, they want to make sure that they're guaranteeing that the funding is there for those people that have been promised it o- over the long haul? Because I mean, it's, it's been, it's been a line item in our budget that, you know, we've, we've had, you know, for a while, a while, many, many years.
Yeah, I mean, the, so a couple of thoughts, you bring up the healthcare cost. So that's another significant factor, kind of to the, the question that was asked, right? Healthcare rates and trends increase and will affect your liability. But, you know, the, the plant, the, the state's goal is to really make sure that our local municipalities are going to be fiscally viable and sustainable over time. And, and with these really large unfunded legacy costs, that is cause for concern for everyone, right? Because you're generating funds today to, to pay today's costs, which are significant in and of themselves. Think about what inflation's doing right now. And yet you're still having to fund these legacy costs. And over time, that becomes unsustainable to the question that was asked earlier. So, you know, in some cases, you know, folks want to make sure the money is set aside, you know, and fully fund them. And frankly, in other cases, what we've seen is folks have had to reduce the costs by modifying the plan benefits in some instances because they may not have the means to fully fund them. So figuring out how do you bridge the gap between the liability and what's available to fund that liability?
Yeah, okay.
And just to piggyback a little bit on that, because I, I have also seen some of the municipalities in our local area who have chosen just to cut that benefit. And so, you know, even after people have already retired and think that they are going to have access to this healthcare, they just, they, they lose that. And so my question is, is there a way for people who are in that plan currently? I don't know, is there a clause or a negotiation? Or we could go back and talk about, you know, you'll be funded until this point when you're eligible for Medicare or you'll be funded. I mean, is there a way to reduce the liability that this is placing on the village and maybe renegotiate with the people who are involved?
As a matter of fact, our labor attorney wants to have that type of discussion probably after the beginning of the year in regards to what are the opportunities and conversations we might have with the council and with the retirees in regards to what are some options that we might want to consider in regards to those options?
So Cheryl, why don't I go on mute and I'll continue to let you be amazing at your job and not just throw out ideas? Thank you.
No, no, it's good input. Actually, I, I wanted to ask the question. So obviously the labor attorney is going to meet with you Cheryl and you guys try to hammer out some options. Some of those options may consider, you know, a specific payout to just kind of eliminate the participants to, to reduce the liability on the city. My question to Plant Moran is, and I'm hoping it's coming in the next slide, do you have options that we can consider? And then maybe Cheryl has a sheet that she can take to that, to the, to the attorney where they can begin those discussions?
So what we, we have a group called Employee Benefits Group Advisors. And this is pretty much all they do is consult and advise with folks in both the private and public sector on employee benefits, both for activists and retirees. So we'd be happy to have somebody from that group, one of our partners, meet with Cheryl, Pam, your attorney, if you'd like, whoever you think should be there. And maybe really just get, you know, comb through the plan, kind of what, what are the current provisions? What are, what are the contractual arrangements? Where are their opportunities? Because sometimes you can, you can make like a provider change and not really change the benefit, but save money, right? I mean, there's things like that that you can do that the people receiving the benefit don't even notice, sort of a behind the scenes administrative change. We've seen some of that. So we, we, there's a lot of ideas on the table. They're working with folks on this stuff all the time and be happy to set up a meeting and have them walk through that with you all.
And, and just to be clear, so that there's, the rumor mill doesn't get going. There, there has been no proposal put on the, on the plate to, to buy out and, and, and the program.
No, no.
Yeah, we had a meeting scheduled, I think, what was it, two or three months ago with the labor attorney to address this? And I don't remember the reasoning, but we decided to postpone that till January. So that's when we'll, we'll start talking about that in more detail.
All right, thanks.
All good things. All right, so that was all we have as far as slide content. Let me end my slideshow here and share the end of audit letter for Alicia to cover here.
And for those of you who went through this, there is, there's a lot of stuff in here. I'm gonna, in the interest of time, focus us on sections one and two. The information section three, you know, are things that we, they're observations that we wouldn't say are considered, but wanted to leave for your consideration. And then just a lot of information, reference information, but not things that we need to talk about at length today. So I, I'm going to go ahead, Ashley, while you're, while you're getting, there you go.
I will navigate to the sections.
Sure, but why don't we start with section one on page two? Here we go. So this is the first part of the, the letter. And this is where we've talked about in the past, if we identify certain deficiencies and controls that are deemed to be significant, we have a responsibility to communicate those to management and the governing body. And so the first couple of items here, bank reconciliation, segregation of duty and the financial reporting function, I would say really are all related to what I talked about at the onset, that when you're, you know, you're down, some folks in the, the key finance and treasury areas and you have a small community already, it's, one, it's just really hard to get everything done timely. When you, you'll lose a full-time person that's a key person to segregate duties in the way that you've been able to in the past when you have all those position fills. And then to, you know, to have the levels of reviews and the other things that, you know, would make for a fully sound system that you sort of had before. And so, you know, we know that that is important to the city. And so we, we, and we know that you're intending to, to fill those positions. It's a tough labor market, so we understand that, you know, it doesn't always work out in the timeframe that you'd like. But we do encourage you, you know, to continue to work towards getting those key finance and treasury positions filled. It, it is a lot, is a lot of work to, you know, poor Pam, we felt so bad for her. We just kept saying, sorry, you know, another, another thing for you because we just knew she didn't have that leverage that she, she was used to having. And so, and so again, I said the, please that we were able to make it here and still get through everything timely. But there are a lot of impacts, you know, and, and it does create some risk for this city, frankly, with not having those segregation of duties, those second sets of eyes and so forth. So some, some key areas that we just wanted to make sure we, we communicated with you all on so that you can continue, continue to work towards these things as a group. On the next page, so, so we did, we did spend some time talking about this la- last year and over the past couple of years. You know, the, the water loss unfortunately continues to be high and actually did go up a little bit over last year from about 39% to 43%. And we have talked about this extensively with this group and as well with, with Cheryl and Pam. We, we know you all are working on it and are having some frustration trying to figure this out, doing some monthly reviews. And, and so, you know, I guess we can just say, keep at it, keep monitoring it. And if you see those spikes, you know, have, have the engineers and folks get into it, something's got to be going on here, right? Is this, this is not sort of in the normal course of business to purchase this many units and only bill out a fraction of them, right? So, so we just say, keep at it because it is, it is resulting in some significant losses.
Alicia, can I make a few comments here?
Sure.
So fir- first thing I want to just mention, because I know there's definitely confusion in the community. It was brought up yesterday in, in the, in a couple of settings. So what, first off, it doesn't mean that, that, you know, 43% of the water is gushing out of a broken pipe somewhere that, that we don't know about. This is, this is an issue of, of, we're billed for the number of cubic feet of water that we, that we buy from, from Sakuwa. And then when we turn around and bill it to residents, it's less than that amount because we're, we're not, we're not billing for the, the, the full amount that we've been charged for. And, and one of the, one of the big reasons we think that is, is, is as water meters tend to age, they tend to under-report. And so one of the things that we're looking at doing, or actually, we, we approved this as part of our, our capital improvement bond, was replacing the water meters for the, the residents of the city. So that's one of the things that we're currently in the process of doing to try to correct this, this situation. And that, I think, I think we're, we're putting out an RFP soon for vendors. And so that process should be starting, you know, maybe late winter or early, early spring. And, and, you know, on top of that, we do have a very old system. So there could be small leaks that are adding up as well. But we're, we're trying to make progress on, on those as well by replacing water mains. We've done some significant water main projects and we have several more over the next two years that have been funded. So just, just wanted to point that out.
Thank you Bruce for sharing that, their background and context. I would say that's the most significant item here, although we do note a couple of other items that are, you know, related to water and sewer, namely that you, the, the meters, which, which were just mentioned, that there's some other issues that you all have identified internally in terms of some of the meter reads needing to be trued up and corrections. And your, your team is already working through that, so I think that's excellent. And then moving on to...
Just one more observation, sorry about that, my mute was on. Just one more observation and hopefully this time next year, when, when you do this, this audit again, you can really do apples to apples. So obviously we're going to be replacing meters. Maybe hopefully this time next year, you can compare what you're showing us this year versus what you're going to show us next year. And then you, we can see either a bump down or a stability in the loss. And then that way the residents could have visibility on the progress that the city's making.
Absolutely.
So if you could take a note for that, I really appreciate it.
Sure thing.
Thanks.
And then on, so section two, this is our required communication also that we have to just have a discussion with the governing body after each audit that we conduct on sort of all these standard areas. So on this first page here, the, the most significant thing I would point out is under qualitative aspects of accounting practices where it just does describe that the city was required to adopt a new accounting standard for fiscal 21. And that was GASB before related to fiduciary activity. So those of you that had a chance to review the financial statements, you probably saw there was some new, there were some new fiduciary funds that now show up in your financial statements that if you compared to prior years would not have been there. And basically what it did is it brought certain fiduciary and custodial funds onto the, the city's reporting unit. And so now that, that OPEB trust fund that Ashley talked about, you'll see like a balance sheet and income statement for that year over years to be able to see that activity in your financial statements where before it was just a footnote disclosure. And likewise, you do see the custodial activity over property tax collections for other taxing authorities. So the county, for example, that will show up as kind of, the, the flow through will show up in your financial statements now. So the users can see that. And then this, the sensitive estimates there at the bottom, you know, just required to make sure you understand that there are some pretty significant estimates for your financial statements. And we did talk about that with pension and OPEB, but that's just needs to be mentioned here as well. So, so nothing new there. We are required to also inform the governing body if there were any, any adjustments that were sort of passed on that we identified with your team during the audit. And we mutually agreed that it's not going to material in the state, your financial statements. If they're not corrected, it doesn't change your audit opinion. So we all just say, let's just pass on it. But we do, you know, have a responsibility to make, make you aware of that. And that's what these items are here. As you can see, they're pretty small relative to the city's financial statements overall. And then I think that those are the key items. Yeah, and then this gets into section three, which like I said, the first, the first page just has a couple of recommendations, not things that we would think are, you know, very significant, certainly weren't material or significant deficiencies, just some observations. And most of the rest is really just legislative and informational items that your team will be working on and working through or impacted by over the next several of years. Any questions, comments, or anything that we didn't cover that you would like us to address? Oh, and you're on mute again.
Sorry, mute issues today. Just, just a passing statement. So every year you typically at the end give us kind of like an assessment and you do an apples to apples statement saying, okay, based on Lathrow size, you know, we're doing the following things correct. And if we, if we're compared to another city, we're sitting at a certain point. Can you officially make that statement today? Because we want to communicate to whoever is online and whoever's going to look at this so they understand where we are as a, as a city financially.
Sure, I'm happy, happy to do that. And if there's something more that you want, you know, I have some initial thoughts, but if there's something more that you'd like me to say with me being your under the count, just let me know and I'll, I'll speak to it. So when I think about, you know, working with the city over the last couple of years, you know, sound, you know, budgeting practices, right? I mean, you're following kind of all the rules and regulations when it comes to like budgeting, managing, monitoring the city's finances, which is a really key element, right? Because the state sets forth very specific rules and frankly, for, for your, your taxpayers, right? People want transparency around how are you budgeting, managing, managing and monitoring the funds that are being collected? And so, you know, when I think about the city compared to really all of our clients, I'd say you're kind of, you're right there with the best in class in terms of managing the, the budget and, and monitoring and following all the rules. And year over year, I would say even your results, I mean, when you look at your budget to actual, you're sort of making sure you spend within those limits and that you're not having significant variances and overspendings. It's really positive. You had a tremendous bond issue this year where you were able to issue your bonds at a significant premium, right? That's a really good sign that the bond market is viewing the city of Lathrow Village really favorably to be able to issue bonds with such a high premium. So that's something to feel really good about and is to be commendable. I would say where there are ongoing challenges, which in, in most of these, you're not, you're really not alone. And, you know, would be the legacy cost one, right? Particularly the OPEB, so not going to be as strong there. And we all just looked at that, right? There's still a gap that you're going to continue to work on, you've got some plans. And so that'll be an, that'll be an ongoing opportunity to continue to improve and in making progress on. But you, you, you've got a great start. And then the other area I would say where there, where there are challenges is kind of what we talked about with some of the turnover, it just, it just creates some constraints. It just, it just creates some constraints on the team with being able to get through those bankrolls timely and maybe not having a second set of eyes, right? And so I think that, that's important because you're doing a lot of really good things. You put some really sound practices in place and you don't want to lose those. So I think getting, getting that team back built out and kind of having some stability in the team is gonna go a long way.
Let me ask a question about that, Alicia. You know, you, you know, the, the turnover and the segregation of duties, you know, obviously we've seen that, you know, each of the last four years, at least that I've been on council. And, and it's obviously a very hard thing to, in part, given the small size of our staff and, and the turnover. Are there any, I mean, I'm guessing that there have got to be other cities that are, that are our sides that are having the same issue. Are there any creative thoughts that you guys have in terms of how we can mitigate those risks in the future?
Yeah, we do have ideas and we've shared those. And I think your team has really done their best with trying to implement as many of those. So for example, you know, asking Cheryl to maybe, you know, review vendor reports and things like that, that might be not things that the city manager would normally do. But we think it's important, or, you know, you know, Pam used to be the reviewer of the bankrolls. And so now she's had to prepare and so Cheryl's coming in and reviewing. So I would, team is really trying to do, to do what you can to mitigate it. It's just, it's not gonna be perfect until you get another body or two in there. I guess it's the best way I can describe it, but, but not for lack of trying, even with the constraints currently.
Anything else from anyone? Questions? All right, well then I want to thank Plant Moran for their hard work and, and for their presentation today. And also based on Alicia's comments, I just want to congratulate Pam. Because, you know, a lot of that is, is due to your hard work and the incredible amount of hours that you, that you put in. So it's just confirmation of all the great things that you're doing. So thank you very much.
And we appreciate you. Thanks. Really appreciate that.
And anytime you have an audit with, with no significant findings, it's amazing. So good job.
I agree with that.
Okay, then let's, let's move on to the, the next item on, in our action requests for consideration and/or approval, which is item B.
You want to take a motion to accept?
Oh, oh, I'm sorry, 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 sorry. Yep, yep. I'll, I'll take a motion for the acceptance of the fiscal year twenty-one audit, please.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to accept the fiscal year two thousand twenty, twenty-one audit as presented by Plant Moran.
I will second.
It's been motioned and seconded. Can I have a roll call, please?
Roll call, Councilmember Ferguson?
Yes.
Mia Procham Cantor?
Yes.
Councilmember Metley?
Yes.
And Councilmember Siddiqui?
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right, thank you, Yvette. Now we'll move on to the next, next item, which is the resolution establishing cannabis application and scoring criteria. I assume Scott and/or Jill will be introducing this.
Yeah, it's like last time, it'll probably be a team effort, myself, Jill and Suzie. So what you have before you this evening is the, as close to final product as we could get after receiving all the feedback and comments from, from council, from, from some of the public comment that we did receive to the city. I know that we received some feedback from a number of members of the cannabis industry and all that kind of went into consideration in putting this together in, in addition to complying with what we've laid out in our ordinance that has already been adopted. I know one of the speakers during the public comments said that considering approving cannabis facilities, but the city council has already done that, has already opted in and established criteria. So this is, this is the next step in that process. And that has been quite a lengthy process. But we have taken, taken into consideration a lot of different things. As I said, a lot of different comments, a lot of different feedback. And what we've put forth before you tonight, we feel is a very objective, either, either the applicant has it or it doesn't have it in terms of, in terms of requirements for, for what, what will receive or what can receive points. A lot of the comments were, you know, why aren't we putting more emphasis on points for things that demonstrate the strength of the business or the security plan? And so while, while it may look initially like we aren't focusing or aren't prioritizing that, a lot of those require, we've made those just simply requirements. So we're, we're not awarding points for what, what we believe should be the standard that Lathir deserves and desires to have for any cannabis facilities that would be operating within the city. So a lot of the, and again, the points are spread around quite a bit, but, you know, again, a lot, a lot of that, I know a lot of the questions were, were based on why, why aren't we awarding points for, you know, the strength of the industry or the, the type of business that would be strong? And again, those are requirements, those aren't point eligible. So if Jill or Suzie have anything to add or for any specific questions, you know, we're happy to try and answer those the best we can. Don't everyone speak your own?
Jill, Suzie, anything?
I don't have anything. Scott covered it fantastically.
Yep.
Okay, then let me ask if council members have any, any questions or concerns?
So I do, and, and I've voiced this a couple times. So again, we're focused ten points for the installation of side street parking lots. And that doesn't have a really specific limitation. And then also at the same time, there was another section where we gave three points if you created parking for another business. So in my reading of that, I could have a side street parking lot where I had one space and that would then get me ten points. And that would also create parking for an additional, I just am not sure how, how we need to award thirteen points just for parking.
So, you know, and I can address this and Jill and Suzie, feel free to jump in. But parking or the lack thereof in the city is probably the number one problem we have to attracting new business development. We simply do not have enough parking. Part of the environmental assessment done by the road commission when they were, the Southfield Road Expansion identified several properties that will be considered legal takings that the city's going to have to purchase as a result of the lack of parking. So parking is a huge need for the city, encouraging shared parking.
I'm sorry, I don't know what legal takings means.
So, so that means that that property does not have enough parking to remain in business. So for example, the, the office building that is directly east of Bruce's house, beautiful, probably one of the best looking buildings in the city, is gonna have to be demolished because there's not enough parking and that's gonna be at the city's expense. So they will have to compensate the owner of that property if we can't come up with additional parking solutions. So one of the things we've, we've utilized in the past and have had some success, success with and, and an example would be where Fork and Pint is, or I'm sorry, Jagged Fork is, Fork and Pint is in Lake Orient. So where Jagged Fork is now, they, they have utilized some of the city right away and developed side street parking. You know, we floated around the idea of closing off some of those streets and turning those into parking lots. And, you know, every time, you know, the only meetings you get more people than cannabis is when you talk about closing their street. So, you know, it's not a very favorable option. So if, if we can, you know, kind of lean on some of these applicants to commit to the city to putting in those side parking, I think it's gonna be beneficial to their business as well as other businesses within the city. And then the second part of that is the shared parking agreement. So we, and again, I'll use Jagged Fork as an example. So they, they have a business that's adjacent to them that, that has a significant parking lot. But for whatever reason, that property owner will not allow any sort of a shared parking agreement with Jagged Fork. So they're prohibiting any Jagged Fork customers from working in their parking lot. Now, you know, I, I do anticipate that these cannabis facilities will be busy. But by simply allowing the adjacent businesses to utilize any overflow or excess parking, not only, again, not only does that create, you know, a positive experience for the customers of that cannabis facility, but it also may eliminate some of those potential takings and it may provide some of those businesses that otherwise can't utilize onsite parking to meet their minimums to, to take advantage of some of those shared parking agreements. So that's really why we have placed an emphasis on those, those types of things. Because again, that, you know, that is one of the biggest needs, I think, in the city as far as, you know, encouraging redevelopment and keeping the developments that we do currently have.
Scott, I really appreciate that. And I have, I have two more questions if I can, if I can ask them. I'll take all my turns at once. So the, the other question I have, and I believe I know the answer to it, but I just want to make sure that I'm really clear. So when we initially talked about this, we started talking about, would there be incentives for folks who developed undeveloped areas? And so the very last section, we're talking about giving five and ten points over a period of time when a business has increased the property tax value of, of their, their facility. And so I just want to know why we have eliminated the point system for folks who are developing non-developed spaces in our city.
I don't know, Suzie, do you want to, I mean, there's not a whole lot of, excuse me, there's not a whole lot of undeveloped parcels in the city. And I think that was one of the factors we considered in that, you know, any sort of redevelopment or development of an undeveloped parcel certainly would qualify and encompass that, you know, the maximum number of points. Because, you know, that, that was one, that, what, my, my recollection is that, that's why we went in that direction. But feel free Suzie or Jill, if I'm off.
No, I think that's absolutely right. There really aren't that many undeveloped parcels. And that certainly those that would be developing, you know, the one or two that are potentially there would get those full points for that extra value.
Okay.
And it also doesn't, it also doesn't significantly, excuse me, honestly, doesn't significantly disadvantage existing property owners that, you know, have, have continued to maintain and update their properties in the city so that, that, you know, it doesn't create such a unlevel, unlevel playing field.
Okay, and then the other question that I have, Mr. Levy raised tonight, and I think it's a good one, a good point. And so I'd just like to know, he, he mentioned that we are giving benefit for residents who, we give points for residents who would be owners of these businesses. Will we also consider giving benefit to people who already own businesses in the city in the same way we would those who own residential property?
Yeah, I had, I had this, I had the same question and, and was wondering, because, because when I initially suggested that about, I don't know, about six months ago, I had suggested both residents and existing businesses. And I noticed the businesses had dropped off. So I didn't know if that was a conscious decision, you know, that, that you guys made when you were working on the scoring or whether that was something that was inadvertently dropped off.
I don't remember that being in there.
I don't either, actually.
You know, it's been a long time.
Yeah. And now that-
I was like, I don't think it fell out. I don't think it was ever in.
Yeah, I know, I said, I know when I made the suggestion, I included, I said residents and, and businesses, so.
Yeah, I don't see a reason why you couldn't award points for, for either category. I mean, obviously, you know.
Is that community benefits, section five?
Yeah, section five.
Section five.
Well, what would be, I, I mean, I guess, what, thinking back to, you know, the original, having it as the resident, I guess I'm not necessarily, I, I guess I'd like to hear from council people on the purpose of allowing that to include business owners as well and getting the same points for that. Because I do see a benefit for having it be a resident of the city. That was sort of a, an extra way to encourage local control and local, local stake and things. And I appreciate that business owners have that as well. But there are a number of property owners that have a number of, of properties and businesses. And I, I'm not necessarily seeing how that might be the same benefit as having it be a resident.
And that was, that was one of the things that came, came out of, I think, from the early on feedback that we received was that it may have even been from the community forum was to, to give, you know, give a little bonus or something to the residents of the city, trying to find it.
I agree, I agree with Jill. I mean, where would it end? Would we also consider those businesses that have contributed to, you know, music in the park or whatever? We, we would have a long laundry list of things we would have to consider. And I, I think you guys streamlined it pretty well.
Yeah, in fairness, I have to disagree with you on that. There's, there's not a long line. So when, when you add somebody, so we're, we're hoping with this that more businesses will, will come to the city. And please forgive me, I mean, this is something that, you know, until today, I hadn't really, really considered. But if businesses are there, they're already investing, they're already contributing property taxes, they're already contributing infrastructure into our, you know, commercial corridor. And I think if a business has made that commitment to us or is willing to make that commitment, then, you know, if, if, if somebody owns several businesses in the city, in, in many times, they're paying, you know, taxes just like a resident would. And I mean, in a different tax structure and those types of things, but they're contributing to our success.
And, and actually more, more taxes because they're also, they're also paying the, the, the two mils for, for the DDA.
And I will say, you know, in fairness to the business district, we've, the DDA, you know, over the course of the last few years, I mean, through our formal and informal polling of our business community, most of them have actually have significant longevity. I mean, they've been here, you know, ten, fifteen years and beyond, right? So I mean, I think a lot of them actually have just as much ownership in the community as perhaps some of our residents.
And, and the other thing I'll say is I don't think that there's necessarily like, you know, well, and I can't, I can't say that, but there may be somebody to drop in and buy a house or buy a piece of property as, as someone who maybe wants to apply for one of these licenses is a very different commitment than somebody who's put their, you know, kind of livelihood, opening a business and, and doing that kind of thing. I, I really would like us to consider that owning a business and operating in Lathir Village, you know, also carries some weight just as if you are a resident.
I agree.
I agree with that as well, for businesses that are resident in the city. So that would cut out, Ian, you know, people that just contribute to the concerts in the park and those kind of things. There were some of them, right? So businesses that are resident in the city, I think, should be given some favorable treatment as well.
But aren't they getting favors through the DDA and all that, as Suzie just stated? I mean, I think, you know, it's, it, it's not like we're doing an offset of that. It's not like we're not comparing their efforts. But I just think, you know, owning property, paying taxes on that, owning a house, living in the community, contributing to the livelihood of the community, that makes, that speaks volumes, doesn't it?
But how?
But all of those things businesses do.
Right, they're, they're all doing that too.
And, and please know, I, you know, this, this is the thing is, is until, you know, they're doing it and then sometimes doing it at an even higher level than residents are.
So are, are, let me just, before we get too far, are we talking prop, business property owners or business owners? Because there's a distinction between the two. And I think, you know, if you're gonna, you know, business property owners, that might be more appropriate than just, you know, owning a business because that, that could potentially open it up to a lot of different, you know, there are, I'm just envisioning some, some structures in the city that have, you know, businesses that come and go overnight. And, you know, depending on when they submit their application, may or may not be a business in the city, so.
And Scott, I think that's a really, that's a really valid point.
Thank you for articulating that.
Well, yeah, credit goes to Jill for that one, so.
Yeah, no, that's, 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 that's a really good point.
Right.
I think we want the benefits like Ian is talking about that come from businesses who, who own the business in-
Exactly.
Yeah, totally, totally agree.
All right, so Scott, Scott, can you, because obviously if we make, someone makes a motion to approve this, this resolution, we're gonna need to add a portion- we're gonna need to add uh a portion to to fix that. So can you give us some suggested verbiage?
Well, here, I already got it. Can I, um?
Oh, okay.
All right.
Somebody write this down as she's talking.
I I I, so I have it under community benefits, sort of in the fourth bullet, where currently it says at least twenty-five of the business, percent of the business owners have a primary residence in Lathir Village and provide property tax records. So changing that to say at least twenty-five percent of the business owners, uh cannabis business owners have a primary residence or or maybe and or own property, own property and operate a business in the city. That's not worded right. Give me ideas.
And or own commercial property.
Commercial property, yeah.
So they don't have to have a business, they just have to own property?
No, and oh, and or own commercial property and operate a business in city, in Lathir Village.
Well, I think, and again, I think, you know, operating, the fact that they own commercial property, if they're leasing it out, that that's the operation of a business. I mean, that's, that's an argument that
Right.
we're currently having with another property owner as to whether or not ownership and licensing or leasing of properties is a business enterprise, which I'm of the opinion that it is. So I think um
So
owning commercial property is sufficient.
Is it, is it easier to say if someone has has paid property taxes in the city? Is that, is that easier?
Well, I think that would um
They would still have to provide property tax records that show that they're in good standing.
It would just, it it could be for just any owner of property, which is basically what you're saying, any owner
Any property owner.
Do we want to simplify it to that?
I think it takes away the distinction of whether it's residential or commercial. And I think I I, you know.
So it would just say twenty-five percent of the business owners
Own property in the city of Lathir Village.
Okay.
Esquire Baker, are we cool with that?
Are are we?
Did Scott answer? I looked away. Did he shake his head or?
Yeah, I said, yeah.
Okay.
I'm fine with the wording. I'm waiting for
What are you waiting for?
Well, Jill to finish and then
Sorry, I'm trying
Okay, go ahead, Jill.
Thought was, because I'm just trying to think of this, you know, as we're going, so it's kind of maybe not coming out perfectly. But are we then? You know, we're looking for points, just, you know, we're, we're a business, we're looking for points. And we, we're gonna find people or business property owners to be our quarter investors.
Like we would find residents to be that for us?
Like, are we just gonna find the token person to be on our, to be on our?
You could do that for residents or?
Well, that's a pretty lucky resident if they got a twenty-five percent ownership interest in the cannabis business, just being
Good, what, what, I'm, I'm just thinking out loud, would it make sense to say at least twenty-five percent of the business owners have uh or own property in the ci- have owned property in the city of Lathir Village for more than a year? So that way it it prevents what what Jill is is saying, where somebody comes in and buys property or commercial or residential to to meet that requirement? So that it's, it's truly somebody who's been here for a while?
I I don't think that'll stand. I think we we went through some of that when we had um different, just thinking back when we had all of the election stuff. Yeah, many times those timelines are struck down for legality. And again, Scott Baker, please, please be the attorney on this.
Well, the timelines for uh residency requirements for elections is a little bit different. I don't know that that's come up yet as far as uh in this industry, but um and again, it's not um it's, you know, three percent of the points, it's not.
Well, if there's, if there's any risk, then let's not put that in there. I was just throwing it out there as a
No, I I don't, I don't think there's any risk of, I mean, I don't think it's any more of a, of a reason for someone to file a lawsuit against the city, whether it's, whether it's as proposed or if we add an additional level of of qualifier for it. So I think that, you know, if if the council's position is that they'd like to see, you know, individuals that have owned property in the city for more than a year or two years, and I I don't see, I don't have a problem with that.
I like that idea, actually.
Okay. So what, what do you, what do you think is a good timeframe, uh other council people, one year, two years?
I think a year is good.
A year is good.
Cause that stops
I don't like, I don't like the timeline, but
I mean, if they're here, they're gonna be here.
Yeah.
You know, at a minimum a year, but um it it's, I'm kind of on the fence. Either we can add the year or don't. I mean, I I doesn't, doesn't matter either way.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I I like it, but I I do think it's unlikely that somebody's, you like Scott said, they'd get a nice twenty-five percent interest. And it, you know, for for a resident, you know, it's probably unlikely that that's gonna happen. But, you know, the timeline does help lock it up a little bit.
Yeah.
So then the the question is, then is it easier just to leave it the way we have it?
Or is it, or remove it completely?
Overthink it. I don't overthink it.
Ian, my God, this is where we are. We've
No, I get it. I get it.
And and all that kind of stuff.
Hey, I get it. I'm not complaining and I'm not criticizing. I'm saying, yeah. Totally get that.
I mean, maybe would we just leave it the way it is and then and then see what happens?
When you say leave it the way it is, you mean without the time parameter on it?
Without the time parameter and leave it with residents and not and not um commercial property owners.
I would add the commercial property.
Yeah, I I think the commercial property needs to be in there as well.
Yeah.
But I'm I'm fine leaving, leaving out the timeframe.
Yeah, that's okay. I'm fine with that, too.
Yeah.
So just so we're clear, the statement
Well, if somebody owns property, they'll, they'll, they'll get some points.
Right, at least twenty-five percent of the business owners
Cannabis owners
Lathir Village.
Having prime business, owning commercial property in Lathir Village.
Owning property.
Owning property.
Property.
Yeah.
No timeframe.
Yeah.
No timeframe.
None. There are all sorts of head shaking over there. Okay, it's going.
All right. So any, any uh outside of that issue, any other issues that anyone had? I know Dawn started out with her question. Saleem, Ian, do you have any questions?
Yeah, I have a question on the, in that same section of community benefits. And maybe it applies every, in other spots, but are those points possible points or are they gonna get, you know, points, those, that that number of points? For example, that last item, installation of side street parking lots. And I think we've talked about this before, but I mean, what if someone puts in one space versus somebody else that puts in ten spaces? Are those ten points for that category? Are those uh, are we, whoever's scoring this, are they able to allow, you know, that partial points? Or is that a ten, a ten?
Ten is ten. We're not messing around.
There's no partial points, um, because that's where, when you start awarding partial points, you start evaluating based on the merit of of the development or of of the whatever. Uh, that's where you start getting into problems, because then it becomes less subjective and it just, you know, becomes more subjective. So um, and it, you know, to the point where first off, you know, whatever proposed side street parking is gonna have to go through the same approval process um as any other developer would have. So uh planning commission is not going to approve a one-spot parking lot.
Okay.
So, you know, there are, there are some protections against, you know, people that are attempting to circumvent um, you know, the, the rules just to get points.
I just want to make sure we have some ability to, yeah, to to look at that and approve something that's reasonable versus just, you know, someone that's just on the face
A lot of these things too, you know, the compliance um component of a lot of this. I mean, that that came up a lot uh in our discussions is, you know, how are we gonna, how are we gonna determine whether or not, you know, they've actually provided the training? And and a lot of that will be um in 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 one, the renewal application. And then two, uh, these are all special land uses, which means that there's going to be a special land use agreement with the city. Uh, you know, Bruce normally throws in his daily parking lot cleanup uh and bumper block alignment condition.
Garbage.
These are, these are conditions that can be put into that agreement that if an individual business that has received a license and has received approval, if they don't comply with all of their, you know, requirements that we'll put in that, that's a basis to, for that special land use to be revoked. So uh, you know, the council will still have control. It's not, it's not like once um, uh, you know, a license is granted that uh these businesses then ride off into the sunset and we never see or hear from them again. So I I don't think that there's, you know, a lot of the concerns about that type of stuff, I don't think is necessarily, shouldn't, shouldn't necessarily be that big of a concern.
Uh, thanks, thanks, Scott.
Any, any other questions or concerns?
No, I think you guys addressed the security part of it and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Yeah, I just, I just had one, one other one that uh I was trying to remember and I I couldn't remember the rationale. Um, we talked at at the last meeting about the uh WBE and the MBE. Um, and there was some, some, I think we had some outside correspondence at the last meeting um indicating that that they thought that that may be, may maybe too strict. And I I don't remember, I I know we landed, where we landed, I don't remember what the rationale was. So Scott, can you refresh my memory on that?
Yeah, so so basically we had, I think we had, um, we were going to award two points if it was twenty-five percent women owned uh or women or minority owned business. Well, the state will only certify um
Fifty
At fifty-one percent. Yeah, so rather than trying to validate and confirm on our own, um, we just said it's, it's easier to award the points if the state certified them as such, then then we will award the points based on the state certification, really just came down to making it easier for us to evaluate that uh and award points if appropriate.
Okay.
Now, there is one thing that I didn't uh touch on, but I think Suzie, if you could, because we did kind of correct some of the, the language and the timing on the, the process and timeline. Uh, when we looked through it, there were um, you know, it it had, it had council awarding a conditional license very early on in the process. And that's just, it's simply not accurate. That's not what our ordinance provides for. So um so if I, if you wanted to run, I don't have the
Yeah, hold on, let me
Yeah, I did, I did notice that in the, in the chart.
All right, hold on. So maybe I can, you know, do what I'm, yeah, okay, I hope, share the screen. I just want to share that. All right. So um, what we have is that timeline that that Scott was discussing. Um, and we've, we've really tried to, one, it's color coded, right? So all of these, these gray boxes, those, that's for the, well, those two are for applicants. Um, then the, these lighter blue are for us. Then we've got um planning commission and city council. Um, so really what it is, is we've got the thirty-day application period. Then, following the close of that thirty days, um administration has, staff and administration has ninety days to review and score the applications. And then the city administrator will make a recommendation to those top scoring applicants to apply for specialty induced and site plan approval um at the planning commission. So um, we do have in there, and this is really just a, it's not in the ordinance necessarily that they have, that the applicant has to submit within thirty days of license recommendation. However, this is meant to keep the process moving. I mean, I I also fully anticipate that everyone who applies will be pretty darn ready to go. So um, but then I, they will submit for, submit their applications for specialty induced and site plan approval. Uh, and then we go through the same, the usual processes that we do for anyone seeking specialty use approval and site plan approval. Um, Scott will prepare the notices, the special hearing, you know, the, the public hearing notice. Jill and her team will be reviewing the app, the, the plans um for review. You know, pre-application meetings, if they need it, review letters, you know, the back and forth. And then they will be scheduled for um, for consideration at the planning commission. Um, and that's what that thirty days is, right? This preliminary specialty use review. Um, they will have, we will have a public hearing for each, for each applicant, right? Um, planning commission will then either approve or deny the site plan. And they will make a recommendation to city council regarding the specialty induced. And specialty induced are always, um, the final say is always by city council. Um, that process will roughly take thirty days. Um, and this, again, this is a conceptual timeline. Um, they don't always quite flow exactly like this. But um, following the recommendations by a planning commission, there will be a second planning or a second public hearing for the special, or for the uh, the cannabis facility at city council. Um, and then city council will take action to either approve and deny, approve or deny, I'm sorry. And um, assuming they get approval, then they can begin moving through the, the engineering process if, if required and um into the building, building plan review and permitting process. Um, and then a final, their final license will be issued um once the building official has signed off on their certificate of occupancy. So
So Suzie, I have, I have a couple of questions. One, we have significantly expanded the preliminary review and scoring. When we initially talked about that, we were talking thirty days and there was a reason we couldn't do it. Um, we decided not to do it in December because there were a lot of vacation time, people not working. Um, why does it need to increase to ninety days? Because in theory, if we got ninety applications, that would be us reviewing, you know, one each day or or the, the administration reviewing that mid. I I guess I don't understand what the three months, why it takes so long.
Well, first, the ninety days for that, that's an ordinance, that's in the ordinance.
Yeah, that's in the order.
Okay.
So um, and I, I think the, you know, I, I've got the ampersand in there. Um, they're closely related. Um, but I I think really you have to look at it, is there's gonna be an initial, an initial review, right? Are they complete? Like, okay, and if we get not, if we get ninety applications, you know, are they complete? Do they have everything? Um, that ninety, that's a lot of applications. I really hope we don't get any applications.
Right, right, right. And and then And that, but my question is, so with this ninety days, is, because there's a couple of things, because you said this timeline kind of flows. And that frightens me a little in the fact of what if it is thirty-two days to the next council meeting? Or what if there's postponement? Or what if there's this? I mean, do we need language in there that these things can flow concurrently? Or do we also need language that these, you know, things will be decided during regularly scheduled? I'm just thinking about the next council and and are they gonna be, you know, hemmed in by this timeline?
Well, a lot of, a lot of the timelines are not, I mean, really, it only comes to the council at the end. And there's no, there's no council, um, you know, after that ninety-day review period. And and part of the reason why we built the ninety days into this is because, you know, there's gonna be background checks that are needed, gonna be completed. There's gonna be site visits that are gonna be required. There's gonna be, you know, a lot of different uh departments are gonna have to weigh in on this. And and not everyone is gonna get it done, an application a day. So um, so that's, and again, it's within ninety days. So it's providing, it's providing, uh, you know, city the flexibility. And then once, once the uh, the reviews are done, you know, then the administrator will make that recommendation. You know, the, the applicants that are, have been chosen will be notified and and they will be uh informed of the next step in the process and what needs to happen. So then, then the, the kind of the burden will shift back onto the applicant, because at this point, then they're gonna be submitting uh the requisite information to be in front of the planning commission. So
So what if we set up to ninety days and then there, I mean, I just, you know, I just
Well, it says within, I mean, the ordinance says within ninety days. So, I mean,
And it says at the top that it's the conceptual timeline, too. I don't
Right. Yeah, and it's not, you know, this isn't something, I I don't think the city's gonna wait till the eighty-ninth day to get started on this. Um, you know, hopefully we'll have uh, you know, depend, again, it all really depends on the number of applications that are are complete and are, you know, qualified for scoring. And then obviously there is always, you know, obviously there is always, you know, what happens, um, and I, and I fully anticipate there probably will be some legal challenges, um, that, that the city is going to have to address. So that's, you know, I, I don't want to, that's part, that's a big reason why it's conceptual. So.
Right. But 90 days isn't gonna, isn't gonna cover that.
No, and you know, and, and as, as Mr. Luckoff, you know, made the point, uh, in his comments during the public comment section, you know, a lot of times the, you know, there's injunctions that prohibit the city from moving forward, um, accepting other applications or, or moving along the process. So it really is just kind of a case specific situation. And, you know, unfortunately, it's usually the individuals that aren't selected that, that bring the litigation, um, you know, as a, as a last ditch effort. And then those that have complied are, are kind of get, get stuck in the crosshairs of that. So, you know, again, we'll, we'll kind of address those issues as they arise. And, and again, I fully anticipate that there, there will be some, some bumps in the road, but, you know, I'm pretty, pretty comfortable with what we're putting forward.
I, I think so too. And just to sort of, um, emphasize again, the, the amount of time that this is really going to take. Um, because you get, uh, we get, we're going to get a stacks and stacks of applications, um, and making sure that everybody's got all of the information, like Suzie was saying. It, it's going to take a couple of times through to make sure, because you might miss it the first time. You gotta go through them again and make sure that you've gotten everything. Um, and doing that in addition to, um, the, the other daily activities of staff. Um, it's, it, it will take, I, I would guess it would take.
And Jill, let me, let me, let me tell you that I appreciate that. As, as a chief enrollment officer, whose team processes 30,000 applications a year, where you have to go through and you have to verify, I completely understand that. And I don't think it's going to take that long to evaluate, but what I do think is going to take a long time is this is y'all's first time through. And so you're going to have to norm together what, you know, what qualifies for what, you're going to have to develop a flow, you're going to have to have a second check. And so I'm, I'm supportive of the fact that this is going to take longer, especially on the outset, for us to make sure that we have validity in the process. So my, my questions aren't meant to, to put you all on the defensive about this process. I just want to make sure that this is, is what we need to do, that we're meeting the expectations of, of everyone involved. And we're not setting up false, um, timelines that we can't meet or that are extended beyond where they need to be.
Yeah. And that was one of the rationale too, for why we recommended putting, um, you know, opening the application period, putting that off a period of time, uh, was to give, give the staff an opportunity to kind of do a dry run and see how, how, uh, you know, how the process actually will flow and, you know, um, get, get everybody up on, you know, because some of the individuals that, uh, we anticipate doing the scoring have not been involved in the process thus far. So, you know, they're, they're going to need to be kind of brought up to speed with everything as well. So, you know, we definitely have some, the staff definitely has some, some work to do to get ready for this.
Right. And it won't be that, um, the applicants submit identical, you know, the pay, the application itself will be identical, but all of the supporting materials are all a hundred percent different. And where one person puts something in together, somebody else might put it in a different section. It's, there's a, they're, they're inconsistent. And so it's going to take time to go through all of them. I, probably every year it would take that same amount of time. Only staff will know more, you know, oh, I know this one might be i- in this location, but the applicant's materials are going to be all very different each time they submit.
Right, right. Completely understand.
Yeah. And Dawn, the, the discussion that we had, where we were talking about the holidays and so forth, that was for the second resolution, which was, which was the starting, starting date. So I think you were mixing those two up a little bit. So.
I, I wouldn't add it.
Okay, any, anything else? Okay, does anyone want to make a motion?
So, so which motion are we doing? We had two things.
Well, this is the, this is the first one we're discussing now, which is the resolution establishing cannabis application of the scoring criteria.
So I would make a motion that we accept the cannabis resolution with change. Um, and the scoring system that has been proposed.
Right. But you, you either get to state that, the, the change.
I, I think, I mean, Suzie's already updated the document. I think it's.
Okay.
Second.
So it's a motion and seconded any discussion? There's no additional discussion. Can we have a roll call, please?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the second.
Uh, second.
Ian, Ian seconded.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Just a quick question regarding, um, when the application process officially will start.
Uh, that's, that's the next point of discussion.
That's the next point of discussion. Okay. Thank you.
Roll call. Okay, roll call. Mayor Pro Tim Cantor.
Yes.
Councilmember Metley.
Yes.
Councilmember Siddiqui.
Yes.
And Councilmember Ferguson.
Yes.
Motion carry.
All right. Thank you everyone for the discussions. And now we'll move on to the last action request of the evening, uh, which is a resolution establishing the, uh, initial cannabis business license application period. And I'm guessing that again is Scott and Jill to introduce.
Yeah. So this one, uh, again, under the ordinance, the city will accept applications for a period over of 30 days. Uh, we did kind of discuss a little bit during the last discussion, uh, the rationale, uh, but we're proposing to open up the application, begin accepting applications on January 3rd of 2022. Uh, and the close would be February 1st of 2022. So that would give the applicants a look, like, you know, oh, little, just about two months to get, uh, to get their materials together and submitted, you know, a little over two months if you, you know. But, uh, just give it, giving them an opportunity, because there is a lot of information that we are requesting. So, um, that, that's what, uh, we're proposing.
Does it matter, Scott, that we say it's a 30 day period and that's not actually 30 days?
It is, actually. Yep. Um, because we have two days. There's 31 days in January.
Yep.
So I think I probably counted it 15 times just to make sure he's kidding.
Well, I did bad calendar math then.
Yeah. If it's incorrect, then we'll, we'll make sure it's correct before, uh, but it will be open for 30 days. So.
Then we best do it in January, not February, right?
I, I mean, I think that makes sense. I mean, I, I, I don't, yeah. I, I don't see a reason to put it out longer than that.
Okay. And Cheryl, you, you feel your staff will be, be ready by January 3rd?
Ready or not, we'll be ready.
Okay. Just, just for, for whoever makes the motion, um, the, uh, just a couple of corrections on the, on the, the sheet. So in, in the uh, first paragraph that starts out with whereas, and the last paragraph that starts out with now therefore, um, in both of those sections, um, we, uh, it, it shows the, uh, section, but not the actual ordinance number. So we have to put the ordinance number, which is 465-21, dash 465 dash 21. And then in the title, um, it should be an initial application cannabis business, uh, period. So. So if anyone wants to make a motion.
Said a lot there.
Yeah. Yeah. So basically, basically in both places where it, where it talks about the, the section number, we have to proceed that with the ordinance 465 dash 21.
That's the ordinance adoption number. I think the, the that the reference to the section was the, was the code section. So that, that ordinance, once it gets codified, the 465 dash 21 disappears.
Okay. So, so that's what I was instructed to advise. So Scott, do you, how, how do you want us to proceed with that?
Yeah, you can, I mean, you can do that. Um, but I'm just saying, so the 465, if anyone's looking for the reference to, um, to that, it will be under section 18 dash 286.
Okay.
Isn't the suggested motion just at the bottom? That's, that's simple motion.
Yeah, that could be fine. I mean, the, the resolutions have the incorrect dates on them anyways, because they were prepared for the 18th of October meeting. So those will need to be, the actual resolutions themselves will be updated prior to the clerk signing those. Um, so yeah, I, I would stick with the suggested motion. That's.
Okay. All right. I was.
So I'll make that motion to adopt the resolution establishing the initial cannabis business license applicable period.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any, any further discussion?
So Scott, continue your discussion regarding the ordinance number 465 dash 21.
So every time that ordinance is adopted, um, the clerk assigns an ordinance number for it. So the, the 465 is, um, and, and maybe that can time it chiming, because I know we didn't adapt 464 other ordinances before this one, but, um, the 465 is the ordinance number, and that's when it gets submitted to munico. That's, um,
Right.
You know, and then it gets codified into the, into the existing sections. We don't have, uh, 465 chapters in our, in our code of ordinances, thankfully.
Right. That's absolutely right, Mr. Attorney. Absolutely right.
What, well, how do you pick the numbers about? Where do you start? Or is it just continue from the?
To the next. I just continue.
Okay.
Throughout the year, I just continue. Yeah. Keep the numbers going.
So the.
And then the year changes.
So the 465 dash 21 is just a placeholder number. And when it gets codified, then we should just automatically go to section 18 dash 286A. Is that what you're saying?
So, so if you're, if you're searching in Unicode and, and you're searching under the ordinances, this will be under chapter 18.
Right.
You know, ordinance, the clerk keeps a book of all the ordinances. And, and so I, what I'm thinking is 465 is probably from the dawn of eternity when we started.
Exactly.
Ordinance number one and, you know, 1947 or whatever. So, um, that list continues to build. And, and so that's really, it's only referenced in, um, munico until it gets codified. And then you would have to actually search, which is a different, more difficult process, but searching, if you wanted to look something up by ordinance. It, it would be like if you're looking up, uh, a state law based on, uh, you know, the House bill number or something like that. So it, it just, it's, it's not really necessary. And I think directing the attention to the actual chapter and section would be, was, is probably easier for anyone that's going to look it up in the future.
So it's been, it's been moved and seconded. Um, oh, I, I'm sorry. Any further discussion beyond that? Okay. So, uh, roll call, please.
Roll call. Councilmember Metley.
Yes.
Councilmember Siddiqui.
Yes.
Councilmember Ferguson.
Yes.
And Mayor Pro Tim Cantor.
Yes.
Motion carry.
Okay, thank you. Um, so now, um, we'll open it up again for public comment. This, this time it's for public comment for items that were not on the agenda. Uh, again, three, three minute time limit. Um, if you have, uh, any comments about items that were not on the agenda, please raise your hand and, uh, and we will unmute you so you can make comments. Uh, looks like Mr. Levy's raising his hand again.
Okay. I just wanted to say thank you. I, I've been there for 20 years and I've loved it. Uh, back then, uh, I was a lot younger and had no gray hair, uh, even before a lot of the current council, uh, that's, that's there now. I, I've always enjoyed, uh, interacting with, with the city, whether we planted a new tree here and there, whether I had to redo a roof, paint the building. But I just want to say that, uh, for many of you who don't know, my father back in the seventies was just south, I'm sorry, uh, the other way, north of the building that I own now. My wife and I, uh, own it together. And I, I gotta tell you, as a, I've said, I don't live there, but I've owned there. So I don't want to tag team back, you know, my three minutes to what we just talked about on the agenda, but I, I appreciate the, um, the thought process and, and modifying that. But in general, I, I really love Lathir Village. I think the accessibility to the freeway is great. And I just really wanted to say thank you. And I know, uh, someone said y'all earlier, and I don't know who said that. But I, 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 I know, I, I know you all have a, uh, have an election coming up. So I wanted to wish everyone tremendous success. Uh, I think I've talked to Scott Baker once over my years there. And, uh, we love our neighbors. We love the neighbors, uh, that are joining when the power goes out, which we've had a few of those incidents recently. It's been nice to be able to text one of the neighbors in the neighborhood if I'm not there and I can't see the cameras. So I just want to say on a positive note, I'm sure there's some controversy over the agenda tonight. But just a big kudos to the council, to the city staff, to the police department. The alarm goes off. It's nice to know that we have Lathir Village PD there in about 30 seconds flat. So really my closing comments were just to say thank you and also shout out to Suzie, who has been, uh, very helpful. Uh, she's been a really good go-to person. If there's been questions that have arisen about the agenda this evening, she's really been in the know. She's been extremely responsive. So to her bosses that are listening tonight, I want to say that personally, as just a little guy named Levy, that happens to talk to Suzie occasionally, she responds to phone calls, texts. It can be after hours, it can be on a weekend. And she's just been a tremendous asset to the city. So, uh, I'm sure I'm not at my three minute mark, but I'm good. Thank you for everyone, uh, for allowing, uh, us to speak tonight. I know sometimes these meetings are not always fun for the council and/or for business owners or property owners, whether it's residential or commercial. But you guys do a great job. I'm the current chairman of the board for Michigan Better, Better Business Bureau, and I'm a big fan of customer service. And I think the way that y'all conducted yourselves tonight was tremendous. Uh, in, in some of the controversial issues, which I think cannabis is certainly one of them, or it could have been over, could be over building a bridge over Southfield Road for all we care. But again, I'm a very happy Lathir Village guy, uh, and plan to be that way for many years to come. So just a big thank you and good luck at the election tomorrow.
Thank you. Any, anyone else?
I spoke on behalf of everybody. It's okay.
I don't see any other hands raised.
Okay. Then, uh, thank you for your comment and, and thank you, Suzie.
Thank you.
Making us look good. Um, so, uh, now, uh, move on to mayor and council comments. Any comments on anything in general from the council?
Yeah, I've got a couple. So, um, Mr. Levy, I appreciate it. I am not running, uh, this term, but much appreciated, uh, all the support and, uh, your business is the gold standard. I have to tell you that seriously. Really respect what you've done in this community. I know we don't say it often because we're so crazy busy, but I, I appreciate everything you've done for this community. I, I, I really appreciate the fact that you're still here. And it, it speaks volumes to the commitment that you've given this city. Not sure if everybody else realized, but I love that Jeep out in the front. I do. I love it. And I think we all appreciate it. Um, just a couple, um, couple of items. So, uh, several months ago, I came to you all, y'all, because, uh, I'm with Alabama A&amp;M, came to y'all, uh, maybe three months ago, uh, where we had some issues, uh, with a blighted, um, uh, house that bordered, well, actually it was in the Southfield side, but, um, on San Rosa, where San Rosa dead ends. And we share that border with Southfield. There was a house that was blighted and, um, it was beyond, really beyond repair, I think. Uh, but it had an occupant and basically I worked with, uh, code enforcement in Southfield to, uh, figure out what was going on. We actually did. We contacted the owner, um, and the owner subsequently sold the house to a developer and the developer actually, uh, moved the tenant out. And now he's reconditioning the house totally. So it's going to be an internal total gut. Uh, he's going to be doing the landscaping, actually, uh, way ahead of schedule, started, uh, maybe five weeks ago. And the neighbor next to it, the Lathir Village resident, was really appreciative that, um, we actually took up this task. So I want to thank, uh, Cheryl for pushing me to do it, to do the, the right thing by contacting code, code enforcement in Southfield.
want to thank Cheryl for pushing me to do it, to do the, the right thing by contacting code, code enforcement in Southfield. And so, um, hopefully it's a happy ending. It's not completed yet, but, uh, I anticipate that if there are any glitches, I'll certainly contact someone, maybe do, see, click fix. And then you could maybe follow up, uh, with code enforcement in Southfield, but they're fully aware of the progress and, and we're going, we're going strong. Um, uh, the last thing is, uh, so, uh, in front of the troops, troops' house, I, we talked about, um, the culvert that really wasn't a culvert. Is there any update on that, um, section that's actually literally, uh, on the Michigan first property? It's not really a culvert, but it's turned into a culvert. And we need to get some resolution on that. Not sure if Rami was following up.
With me today. I'll have to follow up with you on that.
Okay, okay. If you could, I would really appreciate it because they want to know what the update is. Um, if something can be done, if we need to contact Michigan first, we certainly can do that. Uh, I think that's it for me. Um, I think this is my official last, uh, council meeting. So let me take the time because I won't see Jill in the next couple of weeks. Thank you for, um, just bringing a high level of professionalism, uh, to Lathir Village. I appreciate it certainly. And you knew me before I was a council person where I was raising hell. And now you know me, well, I'm a council person and I'm still raising hell and you still put up with me. And I appreciate it. And, um, I just respect everything you've done for this city. And, uh, you've, you, you've really carried the gold standard when it comes to implementing processes, explaining processes, as well as being patient with our arrogance on many occasions. So thank you for that. And, uh, I'll thank the rest of you later in the, my official last council meeting after elections.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Blame anything? Dawn?
Um, I, I have something real, real quick. As the official holder of y'all moniker, because Ian just went down there for a few years. I don't know how long your bachelor's degree took you, but you know, that was still wasn't as long as I've been living there, Ian.
What?
Yeah.
I might have to beat you on that. I'll tell you after you're finished.
You got to catch me first. Um, I, I just want to say a couple of things. Um, for those folks who believe that this decision or this process was rushed in any way, um, the, the points that I will give to one of the speakers tonight said something about the fact that this happened during COVID and, and during a pandemic and this work occurred during then. And I want to say, yes, it did. And that was amazing work that occurred. But to assume that there weren't boots on the ground, going to look at these places, going to look at sites, going to, to have meetings, to do phone calls and all that is a really poor assumption. Um, I can tell you that, you know, Salim and Ian and I toured some facilities, um, as part of the, the, the work group. And that was during COVID and, and, and we did those things. Um, you know, and for people who may claim, um, as I've read many of the claims, um, from some folks who, you know, came late to this discussion, um, there were lots of opportunities to speak up and, um, there were lots of opportunities to participate. And many of, of the folks who, um, are choosing to speak up now, um, and be very vocal with incorrect information, did not choose to speak up until the decision wasn't one that they supported. And so the thing that I would, I would say about all of that tomorrow, we do have elections. Um, there are elections happening in, in Lathir Village. You know, the opportunity to, to select candidates who are there to wrestle with these issues, even when they're issues that they may not personally agree with, but they really are keeping what is in the best entry, interest of the city as the, the, you know, the, the compass point for their decision-making. I think that's what Lathir Village needs when it comes to electing folks. And I will just say that this process hasn't been fun, but I have very much appreciated the guidance and, and the input and the pushback and the, the drafting stage and Suzie's use of ampersands and all of these things. Um, to get us to a place where we had a proposal and we have a process that, you know, may not be perfect and it may not be where we actually land. But I think it's a purpose that Cheryl and her, or, or a project and, and, and process that Cheryl, in her position can guide staff through the evaluation. And so I just want to say that I think that the city folks who worked on this, I think the council folks who worked on this. And even though, you know, there were a lot of, of things said about the process, I feel very strongly that it was a process that was born out of hard work and, and really listening and trying to investigate and trying to learn a lot of different things about this. And I have shared this all with you before, and I will share it again. I was not the person who anticipated that I would be voting yes on this for Lathir Village. When I said I would serve on the committee, I had bias that this was not a good decision for the city. And I will tell you through this process, I fully believe that this is a good decision for our city. And I do believe that it's something that, that, you know, I can feel good about. Um, as with Ian, because I'm not running. Um, you know, we'll, we'll see how that all shakes out. But, um, I'm, I'm proud of this work and I'm, I'm proud of this team that brought it to fruition. So thank you to everyone.
You.
Thanks, Dawn. It was well said. Um, yeah. So Cheryl, I just have, uh, one, one minor thing. And, and then the only comment I had, which was basically the trash truck again, was doing the middle of the street thing. And, uh, uh, so a resident blocked in for about five minutes today while they sat, you know, doing a big load because they were in the middle of the street and, and couldn't, couldn't get by. So, uh, again, it's probably worth mentioning to, Trigali or whoever, it was still Trigali. So, um,
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, i- i- it's, it's just they, they need to consistently stay on one side of the street. Um, so, um, that's the only thing I have. So, um, I'm not going to pile on to Dawn. She said it very well. So. Um, all right. Anything else from anyone?
Yeah, everybody needs to go vote tomorrow.
Yeah. Well, that was, that was going to be my next statement. So just, uh, reminding everybody that, that tomorrow uh, is, is an election, um, of that it's eight AM to eight PM. Is that correct?
No, no, the polls open at seven AM.
Seven AM.
Close at eight PM. Yeah.
Seven AM. All right. Thank you.
Yeah.
So, uh, get out and vote. Tell your neighbors, everybody get out and vote, um, express your, your opinions for your candidates and, and then we'll, we'll go from there. So I appreciate it. Thanks, everybody for their time tonight. I know as Dawn said, it was you know, not always easy, but I, I think we came up with a very good, uh, um, system and, and order, set of ordinances. And, uh, um, thank you, everybody for your hard work. So. All right. Uh, that said, uh, I'll take a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Thank you, Washington, to adjourn.
Okay.
Second.
All right. So meeting's adjourned. Uh, have a good night, everybody.
Thanks, everybody.
Thanks, everyone. Good one. Good night.